I'd like to call the regular Board of Education in order. Please rise.
The pledge.
Pledge, leaded to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call Kelly.
Mr. Betterman?
Here.
Mr. Caseley up?
Here.
Miss Lee?
Absent excuse. Excused.
Mr. Rakowski?
Here.
Ms. Stadler?
Here.
Mr. Singh?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Steve?
Excused.
Mr. Wick?
Here. Fire exits there on the back of the LJ.
Alright, our first workshop tonight is the Technology Budget Presentation. Um, Mike, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna run through our agenda. It's good to see you guys again. Hopefully, I'll move along a little quickly because I heard there's a basketball game today.
No, 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 no.
I was just kidding.
Oh, okay. So, first, we're just gonna go through a little bit about our department, give you an organizational overview, remind you a little bit about who we are as the tech department. We got a short video to kinda show you the work that we've been doing all year. Then we're gonna talk about our Chromebook One-to-One Initiative, which the department has been so excited about. It's been such a successful program at Roundabout, and we're looking to move that up to the high school next year. We're gonna talk about the interactive boards that we're looking to install here in the high school, and then some replacements throughout the district. Some of the software enhancements that we've been putting in place. And then we'll talk about just some of the boring budget figures and the budget graph and, you know, that sort of stuff a little bit later on. And then, of course, the Bosie's aid that we've been able to maximize and generate as we move through this school year and the upcoming school year. So, just an organization overview. We're a little bit of a small department, but we do a tremendous amount of work. So, that's our work chart pretty much right there. Our Director of Technology is myself. We have a network specialist, and we have one vacancy that's currently posted, and we're looking to fill that. We have two Information Services Specialists and Audio-Video Technician who's here this evening. Our Data Coordinator, and I'm looking to add some student summer interns for this summer. And it's something I did in my previous district. It gives students an opportunity to work in a real IT environment. It's great assistance to the technology department in setting up and reimaging computers and equipment. And I think it's a win-win for both the district and the students that get selected or hired to participate. So, that's something that we're looking to do that's new this school year and would be new this summer and is incorporated into this budget proposal this evening. So, is the one vacancy, we already have that position, it's just a vacancy, it's not asking for a position?
It's already in the budget this year, it's just not filled.
Okay.
So, it's not an add?
We also have a partial Bosie's shared person. Is it still in there? We have, the person that was the part-time Bosie's person last year was hired on at the beginning of this, in the summertime this year as a full-time Beacon employee rather than a Bosie's. Okay. Thank you.
So, is the student network technician a position that's hired every year? Or is that student, keep that position through?
In my experience doing it in the past, we opened it up like any other job. So, you would interview your candidates from year to year. So, just because you were a student technician this summer doesn't mean that you carried through with your freshman for all 40 years. You would have to re-interview and reapply.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome. So, right now, we have a short video clip. It's generated from our ticket system, and it really just highlights everything that the department has done in the last year in about a minute or less. So, I'll play that for you now. So, as you can see, we're always very busy, but September is our most busiest period, and that's to be expected when our teachers and our students come back and people forget their passwords, and we're getting acclimated with new equipment, and some equipment has been reset up over the summer. So, it makes sense that we have kind of that peak period. But our department does a really great job in responding to all of the tickets that come in. We're available to communicate with us through a variety of ways, including the web portal. You can email the help desk directly. Within the district, we're available by phone. So, there's lots of ways for the people that we serve to get ahold of us when they have a technical issue. And I think this team does a tremendous job in trying to respond to those issues in a very timely manner and getting the issues resolved to keep the organization running. So, that was just a brief kind of overview of what we've been doing and the tickets that we've been responding to to give you just a little bit of a picture plus a little bit of interactivity, which you probably don't often see here at these meetings. So, Chromebook One-to-One Initiative. I wanna talk about our planned timeline and where we are now in 2018, where we're headed for 2019, and what we envision for 2020. So, this year, we went one-to-one at Roundabout. So, we have approximately 661 Chromebooks there right now. And we were able to reallocate the existing Chromebooks when I came onboard this summer at Roundabout to the elementary schools. So, we were able to boost the numbers up at each of our elementary schools this school year. Looking forward to next year, we'd like to purchase about 1,000 Chromebooks so that we could bring Beacon High School up to being one-to-one, which would be about 925 Chromebooks. And then, out of the remaining 75 or so Chromebooks, we would put them at two of the elementary schools with the largest populations to help bring up their one-to-one ratio. So, you can see I gave you a side-by-side comparison of where we're at right now in the 2018-2019 school year, and then what it would look like in 2019-2020 on the right-hand side. And then, that shows you the boost. And then, in 2020, with the purchase of 355 additional Chromebooks, we would be one-to-one district-wide at the elementary school. Our Chromebook One-to-One Initiative has been so successful at Roundabout. Our teachers, our students, they're learning in new and innovative ways. And sometimes, it's hard to quantify that. So, I was thinking about it in my mind, and I said, "How can I present that to the board to show that learning and teaching is transforming?" And one of the ways I looked was the pair usage at Roundabout. So, that has dropped about 140,000 prints between September to today's date, so year-to-date this year, already. So, we're not through the entire school year yet. But I think that's a good indicator of showing how teachers are printing less and using G Suite for Education and other web resources to engage students, to have them exchange content, to have them create content. So, I think that's one data point that really shows you and paints a nice picture of the changes that are occurring right now at Roundabout. Talking to Mr. Saltish, the principal over there, he's shared with me that him and his administration and even some of the teachers are able to send out surveys and engage the students on a different level now that they all have email and devices so that when they're doing activities in the building, they can have a vote, they can get student feedback, and the communication is really strong. So, we wanna piggyback on the success down at Roundabout from this current school year and bring that up here to the high school, to the secondary students here at the high school, and give them an opportunity to experience one-to-one, to give our teachers an opportunity, a way to enhance their lessons, to be innovative, to learn from the experiences we've had at Roundabout, incorporate that into their classrooms here at Beacon High School. And at the same time, reallocate some of the devices that are already here, the older Chromebooks, and put them down at the elementary school and continue to enhance and build our programs and our instructional program down at the elementary school. Which, if you've been in any of the elementary schools, they're already, they already have several carts. And anytime I walk in, the carts are always being utilized. There's always students working. It's not every classroom, but you walk through the halls and there's always a Chromebook cart 2, 3 being used throughout the building. And it's really incredible to see the students working, reading, creating projects on those devices. So, it's a really exciting time, I think, to be a Beacon City School District student. I think there's a lot of opportunities when we give students one-to-one electronic devices that opens up the doors for them to learn in ways that they just haven't had the opportunity to do so before. When you say for the high school one-to-one in 2019, did I anticipate like in the fall when they first come back? I even want that ready to roll out in September. Yes. One of the nice things that we were able to do this year as a district was put all-new interactive boards in a majority of the Roundabout classrooms that never had a board before. And it's been a tremendous success. If you walk through Roundabout Middle School on any school day, you'll see almost all of these boards being used in instruction, delivering content to our students, giving teachers the ability to have our students come up and interact with the board, interact as part of the lesson, get students out of their seats so that they're not just sitting for 40 or so minutes. And it really gives the teachers a new dynamic in how they're able to share content with the students, make learning come alive, incorporate video content, incorporate visual effects and images for our students. So, I think it was a really nice addition, it paired really nice with the Chromebooks in the sense that our teachers can also put not only their screen, their laptop screen on the board, but they can share student content through Chromecast or Relay Classroom, which is one of our web filtering products, and it's also a management tool. They can broadcast a student screen onto their interactive boards as well. And we've done some trainings with teachers in the fall to show them how to do that. So, it's been a really nice addition. So, we wanna bring that up here to Beacon High School as well. We put about 15 boards here in Beacon High School this fall, but it really isn't enough. Most of our classrooms still don't have interactive boards. You can see there, we have 59 classrooms that have a need. Teachers that don't have them have asked my department and I if they can get them or what the timeline is, and we're hoping to bring that to them for next school year. Especially if we go one-to-one at the high school, we'll give them the same experience of Roundabout where they have a way to deliver and share content to their students. And then, we broke out a couple of the other buildings. There's some aging boards in them. Roundabout is one, so there were several aging boards that we didn't replace. There was four that we didn't replace this year. There's a few at South, a few at JV Forestal, and more than a few, five or so, at Sargent and Gleno. And these are boards that are aging, they're nearing the end of their useful life, and they're due for an upgrade. Teachers have reported issues with the touch functionality not working on some of them. Some of them, the projector bulb is just dim. It doesn't project as brightly as it used to. Even changing the bulb hasn't helped. So, this is the proposal for next school year, a total of 80 interactive boards district-wide to help enhance the learning and interactivity of instruction in our classrooms.
Can you tell me are they all the same brand?
We would anticipate typically when we buy, we buy from one company, one brand, because you typically can get a better price if you go bulk like when you purchase anything else.
Do you presently have all one brand or is it mixed?
We have a mix throughout the district. Some, the most oldest boards are Smartboards, brand I should say. A lot of teachers just say, "I have a Smartboard," but that's just a brand name. At the elementary school, there's several Promedian boards, and that's another brand. And in the middle school, we went with Dell Interactive Boards. Alright, the numbers, budget and figures. So, I gave you a presentation of this year's line item budget based on categories. So, we have computer hardware, contractual expenses, travel, supplies, software, E-Rate phone, and Bosie's services, as well as our salaries. And I gave you a comparison. So, if we go down the list, computer hardware is pretty flat. We actually dropped a little bit because we're running more of our computer hardware purchases through Bosie's because we wanna generate aid. I like Bosie's aid because it's kind of like free money for the district. Once you buy the equipment, you see that money back the following year. And we're at a rate of over 50% return, so that's a really good rate for the district. Think about if you went to a store and bought something for half-price. Now, you don't buy at half-price this year to get the money back next year, but you see what I'm getting at. So, we're trying to run more of our hardware purchases through Bosie's. Not everything qualifies as being Bosie's eligible, so that's why we still have a small percentage of hardware being bought just out of that line item. Contractual expenses went up slightly. We're looking to enhance some of our cybersecurity prevention and detection tools. So, we've added a little bit of funding there in order to audit some of our existing practices and also add some more programming into reviewing the firewall logs and things of that nature. Travel and professional development had a bit of a significant increase is what I'm proposing based on my conversations with my team and my staff. So, one of the things that we would like to do with that money is send some of our team members to be trained in Microsoft Systems Configuration Manager, which is a program that my predecessor put in, and he was familiar with, but the team was not. It's a really powerful program, but in order to maximize its use here in the district, people need to know how to use it. And my team has expressed that they aren't really familiar with it, that they've kind of self-taught themselves and read some manuals and tried to figure it out. But training for them would really be beneficial in helping us manage the existing equipment here in the district. What Microsoft Configuration Manager lets us do is manage all of our Windows-based PCs from a remote location. We can push policy, we can push images, we can monitor those devices. They can report in if they're having a problem or if there's some abnormality, often due to somebody maybe downloading or going to a website that's malicious and causing something funny to happen with that machine in an age where cybersecurity is becoming increasingly difficult to stay up on. So, that's one of the areas that we'd like to use that funding for. Another area is for DayTag, which is a data analysis conference that's held three times a year in the Albany area. It's a group that meets for statewide data analysis people, much similar to our data coordinator role. And they discuss the changes that State Ed is proposing, data reporting tools, uploading the data at the Level 1, Level 2, the changes that may be occurring there, changes in data that may not need to be reported in the future, and also changes of new data that may need to be gathered and reported. And I think it's a really great conference to go to. I've gone to it personally in my last district, and I think that our data coordinator could definitely benefit from going to that training. Supplies and materials also has a pretty large increase, and that's due to the Chromebook cases that we anticipate purchasing for the 1,000 Chromebooks that we will be buying through Bosie's contractual services. So, that will come out of our supply budget, and so we would increase that to cover the cost of the Chromebook cases to help protect the devices, which really prolong the use that they can be here in the district as a useful device. It's similar if, you know, you buy a car and you try to bring it to the car wash and take care of it and things like that. Same with the Chromebooks, we wanna put a nice cover on it. We wanna make sure that they can absorb the shocks and the normal wear and tear of a school day from year to year to year so that we can maximize the life of that device as it eventually gets pushed down to our elementary schools. Computer software, we saw a large increase. One of the reasons is that we're upgrading a Windows 2008 server. Windows 2008 server is going end-of-life, I believe, January 14th of 2020. So, this coming year, we're under the year now. So, that's a large increase that we have to invest in our server infrastructure. We've added some other software this school year, or in the process of adding it for next school year. TEQ Online Professional Development is one of those softwares that we're adding. So, there's a few areas why computer software is increasing. E-Rate purchases, we did our major Wi-Fi infrastructure upgrade this past summer. So, that was really large. And now, this year, we're looking at replacing our backup, what they refer to as uninterruptible power supply units, UPS units, this coming summer using our remaining E-Rate funds. So, we're looking to put basically backup batteries, replace the backup batteries in our closets, in our network closets, so in the event of a power outage, the equipment is protected from a sudden drop of electricity or surge of electricity, and it can keep us up and running with enough time to power down the equipment in an appropriate manner so that we prevent damage. So, E-Rate, as you probably already know, and I have it down a little bit lower in the presentation, we get reimbursed for the E-Rate spending that we do. So, again, that generates some revenue. So, it's kind of like Bosie's aid. It's not, it doesn't quite work the same way. It's a federal program, but we end up getting money back once we spend a certain amount of it. Phone, uh, line item is going up. Our phone system went end-of-life on December 31st of 2018. So, right now, our phone system is no longer supported by the manufacturer, which is NEC. So, we're looking to upgrade the backend software and infrastructure, basically the server for the phone system, this summer. And that's a cost of about $70,000. And it's something that we really wanna do because we don't wanna find ourselves if a major component in the backend of the system, which makes everything work, breaks, we would literally have to go out and purchase a new system tomorrow if that were to happen. So, we wanna make sure that we're taking care of that. I came onboard this summer and fall, and I learned about that. So, it's definitely a priority for me. We wanna make sure our phones are working so that we can communicate with each other and as well as our stakeholders throughout the district. If that happens, so everybody else who has the system has the same issue, right? If you have that model of the system, yeah. So, right now, it's an 80-100, and we would, that's the series. We would be upgrading to the 90-100 series. Yeah, I guess I would be interested to know if we moved it out a year, there's certainly some risk about if there's issues, but you also may have available components in the industry for, I would say, move the, you know, they would just push the 70 out for a year. You know, if you had no spare parts from yourself and others, I mean, you'd be on the last for a year or so. Yeah, the way it's been presented to me is if something were to corrupt, just let's say on the server, and we call up NEC, they're gonna tell us you have to buy a new system, whether it's through them or you go with some other vendor, and you put a whole new phone system in. So, that, again, it's weighing the risk. I don't know that we wanna do that because if the phones went down today, we're not gonna have a new part or a new system in by tomorrow. It's gonna take a little bit of time to set up a new phone system.
So, you rely on the contractor to provide the support? There's no in-house expertise on that?
We rely heavily on our contractor, but we do have in-house support through one of our Information Services Specialists. He does really well, and for most of like the littler issues that we deal with day-to-day, I'm moving an office and I need an extension move, those sorts of things we can do ourselves. But when it comes to actually something corrupting in the server, we're going outside of the organization for that assistance and that expertise.
What about, for example, like let's say the administration building got, we got hit by lightning, right? So, and it kind of fried a board or whatever. Is there any way, so if, if, if fried the board that operates the telephone, then we'd have to buy hold the system?
We would.
Yeah.
And typically, we would end up, I'm gonna presume, going through our insurance in a lot of cases in those sort of catastrophic moments, especially when it's an active guy. You would be going through insurance and getting the replacement. But again, you're still gonna be down for a prolonged period of time because it's not like they just show up and kind of just bolt it in and rerun all the wires. It's, we're gonna have a discussion, and then we're gonna have to contact the insurance, get that money to flow, and then check the comms. So, it's not something that happens really quick.
But we're doing our best to make sure that our systems, you know, have surge protectors in our system.
We do. They're on the UPS batteries, which is why we're looking to replace those because they're at least five years old at a minimum, some are a couple of years older. And we've actually had one or two begin to fail. They actually, we run tests on them, they check in with the department electronically, and we've seen some die or... So, that's 70,000 of the 209. What is, what's the remaining? Is there just money? So, there's normal, just the maintenance costs that typically go with it, our service for paying for the phone, for the phone service itself, the calling, the long distance. I built in a couple of extra phones because my team has reported that we're running out of, like the phones on the wall, they break for various reasons. So, I built in a couple of those as well into the budget. Okay. Alright, thank you. You're welcome. Bosie's services increased about 300,000, 400,000 or so. Again, we're purchasing all of the Chromebooks through Bosie's, so that's one of the larger purchases. We're looking to purchase, in addition to the Chromebooks, the interactive boards. So, that's another large purchase that we're looking to run through Bosie's. And then, as well as just some of our normal upgrades of purchasing computers to replace computers in classrooms and offices and sort of the normal replacement cycle of those machines. So, that's why the increase is there. Again, when we purchase through Bosie's, we receive a significant amount of money back the following school year, which I'll present to you in about two slides, the overall number, estimated number that we're gonna see. The next line item is the E-Rate reimbursement. So, you'll see we're expecting a reimbursement this coming school year after we replace those UPS units of about $112,000 the district should see back in revenue through the E-Rate program. And our estimated Bosie's aid, which is based on last year's spending, is about $554,000 that the district should see back in this coming school year. So, if we look at the ending budget, last year's budget came out to 1.8 million. We're looking at 1.9 million. I think it's a reasonable increase considering all of the things that we're trying to do here in the district. For my visual learners on the board, I gave you a little bit of a bar graph just to show you almost a decade's worth of budgets for the department. And you can see clearly at the end of that graph the investments that we're making in technology in the last two years with one-to-one at Roundabout and putting boards in. These are not cheap expenses, and it continues to grow. But I think it's to the benefit of our students, our teachers, our community to give the students this learning opportunity. And when we talk about the Bosie's aid then from the spending for the coming school year, in 2021, we're anticipating then that we would get back from Bosie's about $743,000 based on the spending we would do this coming school year. So, if we look at another school year, that's the revenue that we look to generate. And if you then look at that number and you compare it to the budget increase for this year, which is about $182,000, it's gonna be offset in 2021, and we're actually gonna generate $6,293 as revenue. So, it's money we're putting upfront now, but we'll see it back later on.
You may or may not know, but how much of that is actually dedicated towards like new curriculum?
I, when it comes back in, I believe it goes to the general...
It's a revenue source. So, when we do the budget, it's one of the revenue sources that we look at. It's the best, is that?
I wanted just to give you a little picture of what the anticipated budgets are for the upcoming school years. We're anticipating close to a 2% increase for each of the future school years, 2021 and 2021 to 2022. Not nearly as much as you're looking at from this year to next? No. You know, we have... Not as much increase. Well, we should hopefully be, we're not purchasing nearly as many Chromebooks next year. We're having to purchase 1,000 this year versus 355 next year. We'll have interactive boards, so we really, it's just comparing, you know, replacing ones that may die in the next school year, but we wouldn't be having a huge influx or purchase of interactive boards either.
Mike, does any of this money, any of this budget account for the smart bond money? Smart schools bond money?
It does not. It's something that the district is working on right now. We have to rewrite the plan, and some of that is gonna look at security enhancements.
So, we're able to do this without utilizing that money at the time?
Yeah.
The other question I have is for the sustainability of it. So, if we purchase, like, we go one-to-one next year at the high school, we went last year, the devices were out and stuff. So, like purchasing, is there like about a timeline, how long do the devices last?
Sure. I'm gonna anticipate that then in subsequent school years, you'll need to purchase about 500 devices a year to keep refreshing the program. And then, we're gonna push the devices, let's say that we purchase now. The anticipated life is 40 years with the individual student here at the secondary, and then we're hoping to get additional years out of them, two to three down at the elementary school level. And the reason that I try to do that is so that at the elementary school level, the students are more prone to dropping them so that the value, we've gotten a lot of use and value out of it up here, but for what they're doing at the elementary level, the devices still are suitable and they work fine for the activities.
Is that the same for the interactive boards as well?
Yeah, it's usually a six-to-seven-year cycle on interactive boards. Sometimes you can push it to 10, it just depends on the board. But yeah, it's a, it's pretty...
Because it seems like we've purchased a lot of interactive boards last year, and we're looking to purchase a lot this year. So, would it be like a break for two years and then purchase, purchase, break two years, purchase, purchase?
Yeah, I would say we would be anticipating... Yeah, I would say we would be anticipating a seven-year lifespan out of those boards that we're purchasing this year and the ones that we purchased last year. And we may go longer. We might get more out of the board, but I would like to play it a little safe. Let's say, you know, seven years will probably be a good time to start looking at replacement for those boards.
Okay.
And there's some though that are ready at the elementary school. So you have the Prometheusans and you have some of the smart boards that have already been purchased down there a year or two ago. So that, they're already being used. So, you know, probably five years we'll start refreshing those boards.
Any other questions?
Any, any, any interest in, I remember, I guess in your previous district, they had badges for students and stuff like that. I mean, is that still in the works? Is that still?
I've allocated some money in this budget to set up a system similar to that, but I haven't had the chance yet to discuss the program fully with administration and also our teacher stakeholders. But I did allocate some funding because that's something that I'd like to do next year, if possible.
And what about like the more cutting-edge technology, like the 3D printers? Maybe even, I mean, if we get something in the industrialized arena where, you know, you've got programmable engravers or something like that.
Yeah, so for the STEAM programs, both at the secondary and the elementary, I've allocated under the hardware line item about fifteen thousand dollars a piece to get new tools, to talk to our teachers, to see what they need, whether it's another 3D printer or something like that.
Okay. So you're, you're, you definitely have good relationship with what, improving the STEM?
Yeah, I've had lots of conversations with our library and media specialist. I know at the elementary level that they're looking to get new cameras for their morning news program. They're looking for possibly some lighting to go along with that. So I'm definitely having conversations with them and if there's other things they need, I hope they bring it forward to me because I do want to support them in that.
And we'll be discussing a more long-range plan for STEM at the March twenty-fifth board meeting, which is when we're going to be looking at kind of the instructional, both short-term and long-term.
Thank you. How about multifunctional equipment? I know like, for example, you know, Mike's there twisting the camera back and forth, you know, but we could live with that. I don't have a problem with that. But I mean, if there's also a class or even an activity, a club that uses a similar equipment that could be a little back and forth, any, any, any ideas on that?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure that we can definitely coordinate and talk to the different classes, you know, especially if the morning news program is using something at the elementary. Could that equipment also be used in classroom instruction then at the, which I think a lot of it already is based on my conversations with the library media specialist. The kids are creating different presentations or projects in those, in the library time and they're doing, and they're using that equipment. But based on my discussions with them, they were just asking solely for the morning news program.
Okay, yeah, get more mileage out of our stuff, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, nice.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mike.
Sure.
Very good presentation.
I'll correct the last slide, so that's it.
I previewed, I went ahead.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, any motion to adjourn to executive session to read the employment issue of particular individuals?
Motion.
Second.
Countless questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Board is expected to return in about twenty-five minutes.
That's right.
So we have no corrections to the agenda. Any student or school presentations? Seeing none, we're going to go to any parent groups? Seeing none, we're going to go open to the public? Anybody like to speak to the board? Nope. Seeing none, we're going to go to superintendent report.
Good evening, everyone. Just some quick updates. We have the first and main section of the strategic plan complete. It's, it's, I emailed it to the board earlier today. We're going to discuss it in the public board meeting on February twenty-fifth. The part that's missing, it represents a lot of really good work and assessment of where the district is now. A mission statement, belief statements, our graduate of what we want to beacon, our profile of what we want to beacon graduate to look like in terms of skills and attributes. And so that is to the board, we'll talk about at the next meeting. And we are busily working on the action plan section of the strategic plan that we hope to have finished in the, or that part is never finished, but we hope to have presentable in the next few weeks. Ways that we're getting the word out about the plan in the coming months is, one way is I've set up meetings with students from grades fifth grade all the way through twelfth grade and at both, at each elementary school, obviously Roundabout and Beacon High School. We had, we have a couple of meetings that were supposed to kick off tomorrow and we have some winter weather kind of coming in on us tomorrow, so we'll see what happens with that. But, so we'll reschedule who we have tomorrow, but I'll be meeting with these groups. We'll be talking about the strategic, strategic plan and also talking about the budget process and getting input from probably when we're done, about a hundred and fifty students in terms of what their thoughts are on both of those things. I'll be setting up meetings with our PTOs for the month of March at each of our buildings and set up also, I'll set up some community meetings where we will be discussing both budgeting and the strategic plan. So we're really excited to be at this place. It all, the timeline that our consultant laid out with us in the fall was met and we are very excited to be moving forward. So I'm excited to be talking about this plan with our students, with our community members. On March eighth, all of our teachers and teaching assistants gather for a day of professional development. And on that day, we'll do a presentation about the strategic plan for all of our educators. So we're going to be doing a lot of rolling out in the coming weeks and we are very excited about that. One community note, on Saturday, February fifteenth, so this Saturday, just a reminder to everyone that the Southern Dutchess Coalition's Martin Luther King Day celebration that was canceled due to, you know, winter weather, ice, severe cold back in January has been rescheduled for the Saturday. It starts, the breakfast part starts at eight and then there's the march and some of our students will be reading their essays that they, the award winners from the essay contest will be reading some essays. There will be some speeches given by community members, then there's the lunch and more activities after that. And so it'll be a very exciting day. It is at Springfield Baptist Church and again, Saturday morning. Come on out. We'd love to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no unfinished business, so we'll go to committee reports, including board comments. Noah and/or any?
All right. I have a lot of sports shows to give.
Shout them out.
So as far as track goes, we have two new school records that were broken in the past week. In the thousand meter, Zachary Kater got the new school record with a two thirty-six. And then in the sixteen hundred meter, Ryan Corey got the new school record with a four twenty-six. And both of them are going to state qualifiers this weekend, possibly going on to the state meet. And for bowling, the girls, bowling team had their girls, their section was today. They went undefeated and they've been undefeated since January twenty-seventeen, so it's thirty-five games in a row. They don't count sectionals as far as undefeated goes, so they got second place today. Jenna Mathie and Brianna Virchilso are both going to states for Beacon and they're both all-league, all-section bowlers. Selena Virchilso is also an all-league and all-section bowler. And according to their coach, Mr. Mahad, they are the winningest team in Beacon bowling history. So they've had quite a run and they're hoping to keep that going. So their state meet is in Syracuse, so they have a month to train for that. And that is all my comments.
Awesome. Thank you. Any?
I'm going to present the arts side. So the Scholastic Art and Writing Competition just had their award ceremony on, I believe, last Friday. Now I have specific names and awards that people won in school. So Julia Russell won two silver keys. Lauren Simon won one silver key. Sydney Kurtz won one gold key. Molly Robinson won two gold keys and two silver keys. Yali Felix-Broth won one silver key. And Rosa Nunez won one gold, one silver key. And yours truly won one gold key and one silver key. So congratulations to all those who won. And hopefully Beacon and the district will continue to support our education.
Great. Thank you, Joe.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. All right, James, you want to start?
Sure. We have a policy committee on Thursday, the twenty-first, at seven PM. Actually, I wanted to ask Ann Marie, maybe you know the answer. Since, it's been a little while since our last policy committee for the new year. We were on a schedule for a review of policies and a trend in place where we are as we move some things around.
Yes, so I think there's some that were discussed and not brought forward to finalization. So Kelly's been working on that list and I think that's what we're going to try to bring forward to just try to move everything forward and then start with the code of conduct later on.
Okay, great. So the code of conduct will be the following meeting, Mike?
Following our two, right?
Probably a couple of meetings, probably April, March. I'm looking at there.
Yeah.
Great. So the agenda will be set.
Right.
And that's, I have no personal comments.
Any questions about policy? All right, Elsa?
I have no comment tonight, thanks.
Mike?
Okay, so for facilities and operations committee, we should be getting our proposals, the bids back?
The bids will be, bid opening will be Friday at eleven because of the bad weather, we rescheduled.
Okay, Friday, the bids for the capital project will be open and we're going to have a facilities committee meeting on the twentieth.
Correct.
That's what we'll, committee will look at the bids. And the next board meeting on the twenty-fifth, we will be voting on the contracts, right? So that's the, that'll be the official kickoff of the capital project, which hopefully will start, you know, as soon as the weather gets, as soon as the weather gets nice in April. So, so a lot of, those are exciting things coming up. We also, I don't know if we talked about, you know, we're starting to look in the future at the next capital project, probably in the twenty twenty-two, is it twenty twenty-two would be a construction for that project? So that's kind of the plan, another, you know, five, you know, a couple of years. And so we're starting to talk about developing what would be, you know, what infrastructure needs and changes and supporting curriculum like the strategic, you know, coherence plan that we need so we can get into that. It was a nice view to support where the curriculum is going. So a lot of exciting things going on and that's all I have.
Any questions? Mike? Anthony?
So we, so James and I were conspiring and so we're going to have a diversity committee in the same night as the policy committee.
Which was twenty-first?
Twenty-first, April, um, sorry, February twenty-first at eight thirty. I'm sorry, eight fifteen, is it eight fifteen? Eight fifteen, I'm sorry. Sorry, I changed that topic. But the, and in terms of comments, so a community member came up to me and was talking to me about how a school district in Michigan created a, their local credit union, created a student credit union. And one student was in charge of loans and the other one was in charge of stuff. So, I mean, I think that goes along with maybe any, you know, the idea of kind of integrating more business into the, into the activities and curriculum. So it's more of an activity in the curriculum. But, you know, I know that the National Credit Union Foundation, they do have a Biz Kids program and a, an F C, sorry, it's an F, F C, F I C E P program too. But I don't know which ones in New York do it.
What does that mean?
It means Financial Counseling Certification Program, something like that. It, it, I'll give you an example. So credit unions report out when they give counseling to people. And I think they have a student component to that program, but I'm not sure. So it's something that started with somebody asking me, hey, you know, they do this in Michigan, why don't we do it? So, I mean, I just figured I'd dig a little and then hand the information over to you guys. All right?
Thank you. Any questions for Anthony? Laura?
Yeah, so we had our February wellness committee meeting and we discussed the two upcoming events, including Family Fitness Night, which will be sponsored by the committee and the athletics department, sort of working together on that. It's taking place on March first, six to eight PM at the middle school. I think March eighth is the snow date. It'll include age-appropriate activities run by the high school athletics teams and local organizations for students K through eight and other displays and hopefully some blocks for the smaller kids. So there will be a way for parents to sort of experience the evening without having to manage their toddlers. Also, on April eleventh, six to eight PM at the high school, there will be the Wellness and College Fairs. And there's more information coming about that. There's still sort of in the planning process. The next wellness committee meeting is on Wednesday, March sixth, from four to six PM at the high school. As always, there's childcare, so we encourage parents to attend. A side note, an organization that I work with called Get Lit Beacon and it's like a local literary salon. We are working with the high school to bring classroom libraries to the three special education English classrooms. And so that's something we're doing in the next few months. We're getting cash donations and also book donations. I just wanted to thank Principal Soto for her enthusiasm, so that's it.
Great. Any questions next forum? Mr. Wolf?
Great.
Thank you. That's interesting news. It's a good initiative. So we would have the next meeting of the Public Relations advocacy legislative on the same day as Facilities and Operations on the twentieth. The state legislature has done a couple of things. There's negotiations going on about the budget, so we don't know our final numbers yet, but we will hopefully do by April one, if they keep clock and don't stop it. They also took some, the legislature took action on revising the annual professional performance review, APPR. When the dust settles on that and we see what happens with the regulations and so on that come out of state ed, it'll be interesting to look at. There are a number of changes that have occurred also in the evaluation of districts and schools. They changed some of the nomenclature. And it's sort of like old wine in new bottles, but maybe with a little better name on it. I'm not sure how it's going to work out, but they look at individual schools. And of course, this is not anything new. They look at subgroups within schools, like your English language learners, those that have disabilities and so on and special and, and race. So it's not just how the district does as a whole. It goes right down to individual subgroups within individual schools, which makes it very complicated and very targeted. As I say, the dust isn't totally settled on this yet. And I hope that the administration will be giving us some more detailed briefings when it becomes a little clearer so that we can all understand where we're going on this.
Any questions for Craig?
Yeah, Craig, can you just repeat the date and time for the P R A L meeting?
The twentieth?
February?
Yeah.
At seven?
At eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen, thank you.
Following F and O.
Right.
Great.
Craig, are you going to the legislative event or is that past?
No, it was just past weekend. I couldn't go.
Thank you.
All right, I have no comments. Just Matt had, what?
Florida, don't?
You didn't, you don't remember already.
You missed your whole thing about wellness?
Oh, I did, I'm sorry.
Wow.
No, I thought you were going this way.
Talking about zoning out, man.
Yeah.
And mix it up to keep you engaged, Dan.
You got me this time.
Matt excuses himself, so he's making a phone call that schools are canceled for tomorrow.
Canceled? Oh, boy.
So your phones will be going off. All right, so we're on the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits supportive education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on a consent agenda may so indicate and the item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issues. Is there any, from the consent agenda, that board member would like? Is there any, um, consent agenda that board members would like pulled? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve eleven point oh one through eleven point oh nine.
Motion.
Second.
Comments or questions?
Thank you for the donation.
Yeah, so Ann Marie, can you just give a little bit about what that donation is, it's a? Like, um, how it's gonna be utilized at the high school?
So the, the money right now is sitting in a trust and agency account, um, and there's some discussion about what it is. So Ms. Sims is the one that gave me the check, and she's working with, um, Ms. Bukurtzis that does the, the class. So they haven't quite decided yet, but they wanted to make sure it was earmarked and separate, um, so I can give you a little bit more as we go along.
Awesome.
What general area would that be in?
Um, in technology and computer science.
And, uh, can you tell us a little bit about the nature of the donor, this is a name we haven't seen all the time, so.
He is someone that is part of, uh, the Teals Grant that works with our students in the school, so that's, uh, he's not an employee, he's, you know, a person from the outside. But he was generous enough to donate his, his money there.
And everybody's phone is going off?
Yes.
Should we recognize him at a board meeting, or?
It's part of the Teals Grant?
No, I know, but he didn't have to give it to us, he could have chosen another.
It's, it's, uh, I, is it a subsidy of the already Teals Grant?
It's something that he gets.
In addition to.
Yeah, it's almost like the IBM grant, when you do a hundred hours, you can give, you can choose an audition you give to, because you work for them. I think, that's my interpretation. So I don't think, I don't think he had to choose us, but he did, so I, like.
We could discuss if that could be something that email, we could, um, unfinished business to. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried seven zero. Any motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Mike?
Second.
Laura? Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried seven zero at eight thirty-two.